At this time, I entertain a motion to reconvene in open session.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second to reconvene in open session, although the facts say that. Motion carried. Please rise for the salute to the flag. Mr. Trent, roll call please.
Yes, Mr. Carlson. Ms. Dowling.
Here.
Ms. Heelak.
Here.
Ms. Franco-Herman.
Present.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Walter-Denigan.
Here.
Ms. Nargum.
Here.
Ms. Smina.
Present.
Mr. Todd.
Here.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, June 11th, Board of Education Meeting. At this time, we'll turn it over to Superintendent McGoughman for recognition of staff retirees.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight's superintendent report is the ceremony to acknowledge and recognize our retirees. Tonight, we celebrate our retirees who have dedicated their time and expertise to the students of Montgomery Township School District. I have the pleasure this evening to acknowledge Mrs. Patty Light. As we bid a formal farewell to Patty, I will begin by noting her remarkable journey filled with unwavering dedication as the business administrative assistant in pupil services. Throughout her career, Patty has exemplified the true essence of professionalism in her job. Every task she undertook and every challenge she faced was met with steadfast commitment to excellence. But Patty's contributions extend far beyond the conch arms of her job description. She embodies the essence of volunteerism, always ready to lend a helping hand, especially with the high school robotics team, beyond the decades she served as an administrative assistant. Patty spent endless hours mentoring and serving the team. She built a relationship with all the team members and stays in touch with them long after they graduate from Montgomery High School. Patty and her husband's team, Tim, have planned, organized, and chaperoned all the robotics team events and are head of the robotics team family. Patty's love for children and their success reaches beyond her involvement at Montgomery Township School District. She also teaches religious formation at her church. Patty, on behalf of the entire school district, we extend our deepest gratitude for your years of service, your unwavering commitment, and your boundless compassion. May your retirement be filled with joy, fulfillment, and well-deserved relaxation. Enjoy your wonderful family. You will be dearly missed, but your legacy will live on in the hearts and minds of all who have had the privilege of knowing you. Congratulations on your retirement, Patty. Thank you for everything. To acknowledge the retirees from Montgomery High School, Principal Pinobidi.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, members of the board. And all of our esteemed retirees. Tonight, I am honoring three retirees, in no specific order. But we are going to start with first Lisa Shadid. Lisa, I'm gonna make you come and stand with me.
Yeah, for real?
I've had to watch so many students stand next to her during presentations and stuff that I'm just gonna do it this way. Lisa Shadid is finishing her 18th year at Montgomery High School. She was hired during the summer of 2006 to teach chemistry, which she's done at various levels exclusively. Lisa began her career during a time of transition in the department and is notably the very first hire Jason Sullivan made in his role of MHS Science Supervisor.
I think it was a good one.
Lisa led the department in both curricular and pedagogical reformation. She jumped at the opportunity to get trained in the modeling methods of instruction and quickly acquired the expertise to lead change within the department and also serve as a workshop leader for colleagues across the United States. She carved out a unique space as the primary instructor for the general chemistry class. Her patience, skills, and empathy for all learners helped make MHS the wonderful school that it is. Lisa is a natural collaborator. Do you see how she even collaborated with me by standing? Working with colleagues to refine the chemistry program and also co-teach with a long list of special education colleagues. Lisa's contributions to MHS extends well beyond the regular school day. She served as an advisor to numerous clubs with her retirement leaving shoes to fill in next year's Doctors of Tomorrow and as an instructor for the MHS Achiever. Lisa's retirement will mean the room she has occupied and made a chemistry home to so many students will be occupied by someone else for the first time in as long as can be remembered, perhaps her entire tenure. Occupying the same room has some benefits. The room is decorated to create a warm learning environment and is a welcoming space for students. I also expect you to finish the project of the ceiling tiles before you go.
I'll try.
It's beautiful. You have to stop by. The negative is that upon retirement, Lisa has quite a lot to do. Lisa has been a key part of the MHS Science family, respected by her peers as a colleague and also a friend. It's been a pleasure getting to know Lisa over the years and watching her children progress from high school and onto college and careers in education and medicine. Amanda, Tommy, and James are undoubtedly her true joy in life, perhaps now second in line to her grandchildren who have quickly captured her heart. It's a wonderful time to celebrate a professional who's brought passion and expertise to her work but will now get to spend more time with her family. Your travels to Lebanon will not be cut short anymore by a school year. We wish you and your husband Pierre great joy and good health as you enter this new phase of your life. May your travels be safe and your energy levels be high enough to keep up with those grandchildren. At Montgomery High School, you're kind of in high school for life. Some of us refer to it as a special kind of purgatory, while others, a great joy. I present you with this tassel as you have finally graduated. Our next graduate, as I will now refer to them from Montgomery High School, is Mr. Tim Leicht, who we just heard about, who's wife is working. So retirement, just like working in our district, has become a family member. Also, for the past 18 years, Tim Leicht has been synonymous with architecture and engineering at Montgomery High School. Since his start in the 2006-2007 school year, Tim has been instrumental in introducing countless students to the wide array of possibilities that come with studying architecture and engineering. His hard work and dedication have helped his students learn about these disciplines and, in many cases, go on to some of the most prestigious programs in the world and pursue careers in the fields of architecture and engineering. I'm not entirely convinced that they won't be building you a second home somewhere. Tim has also left an incredible mark on the MHS robotics team, as many of you are aware. Since joining the team in 2006, his legacy includes sustained excellence with accomplishments such as the 2007 Woody Flowers Award, seven First Robotics Chairman's Awards for Excellence, and the 2024 Donald Bowers Inspiration Award. Additionally, Tim was the recipient of the 2012 Founder's Day Award here in Montgomery and a 2023 MHS PTSA Staff Appreciation Award that's given annually to MHS staff members who best support our students and epitomize our inclusive values. More important than these awards and accolades is the impact that Tim has had on the thousands of students who have found homes within his classroom and the Team 1403 Robotics family here at MHS. Every spring, students email, call, or stop in to see Tim and tell him about how well-prepared they were for college-level courses because of the hands-on and real-world experiences they encounter in Tim's lab. Robotics has also been like a family to Tim for another reason. It's truly a family business. Tim is often accompanied by his wife Patty during his Cougar classes each season or on trips to competitions from Mount Olive to Worlds of Houston. Additionally, Tim's son Mike is an instrumental part of the team and spends long weekends and late evenings in Tim's lab during the robotics build season or prepping the team captains for upcoming competitions. For nearly two decades, Mr. Leicht has been a fixture here in Montgomery. Whether in the classroom or at robotics events, he has helped shape the futures of countless Montgomery students. While we're sorry to see you leave us, we thank you for everything you've meant to our school community. Please enjoy your well-deserved retirement, including the opportunity to travel, including his upcoming trips to Iceland and Florida, of which I believe many of us are willing to carry your place. Patch up with friends and enjoy that cheeseburger in paradise. It's probably a good time to mention that he is a big power tech as well. Tim, somehow you got away with not standing next to him. Last, but certainly not least, is Karen Ley. Are you daring enough to stand next to me? I may make Tim follow me around like a bull last race. Karen grew up in a home of a German mom where she was lucky to gain a deeper understanding of the culture and the history of Germany, especially, I'm going to mispronounce this, Schwadener. At university, she began double majoring in German and international business. And thankfully for all of us, she found business courses too long and boring and discovered a passion for secondary education and her knack for connecting with kids. Karen, you might not know this by looking at her, has been in education for 42 years. Karen began working at Lawrence High School and came to Montgomery in 2005. For 18 years since Karen has supported and strengthened our German program. She's taught and written curricula for all levels of German, and her years of experience allowed students a seamless experience from German 1 through AP. I should also let you know that her German AP students loved her so much, they threw her a surprise party the other day. German students in her classes have achieved distinction on the AP exam and in earning the New Jersey Seal by literacy. Karen has been the crucial link in the continuation of the Montgomery High School Exchange Program with our sister school.
Maxfunk.
What she said. I can barely speak English. Karen has helped to expand the program and even helped to keep it running during the pandemic, allowing students to take part in a virtual exchange during the years we could not travel. As a result of her efforts, the gap program continues to run strongly, allowing Montgomery students the opportunity to experience a true cultural exchange. Karen has taught students not only the German language and culture, but also what I sometimes believe is most important, great empathy, kindness, and life lessons. Karen has always infused her classroom and lessons with humor, wit, and warmth that allow students to flourish and grow. Many of her students have gone on to study abroad and focus on language learning. She's been a phenomenal teacher and consummate professional. To colleagues, she has also been a good and compassionate friend, always pitching in where needed. Karen's personal passions extend beyond students to plants and animals. She's a true lover of both cats and dogs. Her love of plants has led her almost to the heights of a master gardener. Maintaining so many beautiful plants all around her home, I think is going to become her next full-time job. Now she will have the luxury of indulging in that passion from her heart's delight every day, any day. Karen, it's been my privilege and honor to work with you all these years. You are going to be deeply missed, and we wish you well as you turn this page and embark on a new journey. You are also grand children. But she's never managed to be a little girl. You can see the rest of our graduates are June 19th.
I would now like to introduce Ms. Raquel Rivera, the UMS principal.
Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent McGoughman, our guest, graduation story on retirees. I have the pleasure of saying a few things, a few words, from Karen. In 2008, American Idol was a top TV program. Slumdog Millimere was the Academy Award for Best Picture. Taylor Swift was the top musical artist, and the Phillies won the World Series. For UMS, 2008 was a landmark year as they found their champion in Mrs. Lynn Carroll. Mrs. Lynn Carroll has dedicated 16 years to teaching and mentoring students at UMS as a proud resident of Montgomery and a mother of alumnus. She has deep ties to the community and has made significant contributions to the Montgomery Township School District. Her passion for literacy has been a guiding light, helping students see themselves in the stories they read and celebrate their prowess as avid readers. Lynn is not just a teacher, but an advocate, mentor, and resource for students and colleagues. Her dedication extends beyond the classroom, and she has served as an advisor to the Unified Club over the past year. In this role, Lynn has ensured that all students feel connected to the UMS community, fostering friendships and connections among students in and out of the classroom. When asked to share reflections on Lynn's impact, former principal, Mr. Lynn Gallow, recalled, "When coming up from the elementary school to work at UMS in 2016, I remember feeling like we won a lottery or traded up for a first-round draft pick." "I was fortunate enough to have worked with Lynn in prior years and had the privilege of teaching her children. We were transitioning to a block schedule, and I needed rock stars like Lynn to ensure it was a success." She didn't disappoint. She never does. Lynn's commitment to going the extra mile has impacted her students' social, emotional, and academic experiences. Her wit, professionalism, and kindness have guided many students throughout her tenure. Over the years, she has been more than a teacher. She has been a friend and a cherished colleague. Your journey at UMS and with the Montgomery Township School District has been filled with countless moments of joy, challenge, and triumph, and we have been fortunate to witness the profound impact you have had on so many lives. May this time be an opportunity for you to pursue your passions, spend time with loved ones, and enjoy the fruits of your hard work and dedication. On behalf of our UMS family, we wish you a joyful, fulfilling retirement."
My second retiree is Allison Sobowski.
Take your time. This is your moment. In 2016, Harriet Tubman appeared on the $20 bill. Drake and Rihanna were the most listened-to artists. The Denver Broncos triumphed in the Super Bowl LV. The United States won the most gold medals in the Summer Olympics, and the heartwarming tale of Finding Dory topped the box office. However, for UMS, the most significant event of 2016 was the arrival of Mrs. Allison Sobowski, a dedicated and compassionate special education teacher who has profoundly impacted the school community over the past eight years. Throughout her tenure, Allison embodied the ideal middle-school approach, challenging our students, holding them accountable for their progress while supporting them to achieve their full potential with unwavering compassion. Words like loyalty, dedication, and kindness come to mind when thinking of Allison. She never missed an important event for her students, attending plagues, concerts, and sporting events. Her commitment was evident as she tirelessly commuted to Camp Mason each year, ensuring she was there to cheer on her students and participate in their activities, demonstrating to them the importance of mutual support and presence. Allison's never-ending energy and willingness to be playful and silly in front of her students made her a beloved figure. She ensured that her students saw her as both a mentor and a fun-loving supporter. Teaching is a calling, and Allison's gift of special education profoundly touches the lives of our students daily. She taught every content area in 7th and 8th grades, demonstrating her remarkable ability to connect, challenge, and support her students in various roles. Her contributions to language arts and social studies and her efforts to prepare 8th graders for high school have left an indelible mark on UMS. Thank you, Allison, for your years of service to our students and profession. On behalf of our UMS family, we wish you a happy and healthy retirement, filled with joy, relaxation, and new adventures.
Next, I'll call up Mrs. Lisa Romano, Principal of Elvis.
Good evening, everybody. Today, I'm here to honor Lisa Renee Benz. Sister, you want to come on up? I say sister because on a good day, kids will come up to me in school and say, "Are you Ms. Benz's sister?" And I go, "Yep, I am." Lisa Renee Benz was destined to become a superior educator because being the strong woman that she is at each monumental juncture of her adult life, Lisa Renee was able to tap into her transformation superpower while at the same time always fostering an environment that nurtured the development of every moment so that they could discover and unleash their own potential. Lisa Renee graduated from university with an engineering degree. She launched her career in engineering at UPS, where she developed designs that elevated the company's ability to pack their trucks more efficiently. As Lisa Renee improved the UPS packing system, she grew to understand the importance of getting to know each component of the system separately, to appreciate how they fit together to fuel best success. And she carried this understanding with her throughout her many transformations. Lisa Renee learned how to drive the very delivery truck she was so desperately bad. After some years of working at UPS, Lisa Renee initiated her first transformation. She and her husband settled here in Montgomery Township, and Lisa Renee spent the next several years at home raising their three children. As Lisa Renee's own children entered school, Lisa, Renee, driven by her passion for learning and getting to know systems, dedicated herself to partnering with our own town's system of education. Lisa Renee never saw her role as parent as separate from teacher. Engineering had always taught her that parts need to work together to build the most successful whole, and so Lisa Renee dedicated herself to partnering with the schools via our parent-teacher organization. In fact, for many years at home, Lisa Renee worked as the president of our PTO. As her children progressed through elementary school, Lisa Renee embarked upon her third transformation. The more Lisa Renee engaged with the schools, the more energized she became, helping teachers and students and families. As a result, she pursued her certifications as a teacher of math and science. Lisa Renee knew she wanted to become the kind of teacher that got to know each of her students as the incredible individuals they are, and she did, while at the same time fostering a classroom environment that built a cohesive community, a system of individuals working together as a team. Transformation number four called, oh, I'm sorry, three, that was. Transformation number four called for fierce tenacity, the ultimate skill that Lisa Renee was able to call forth in order to land a teaching position in our district. Lisa Renee began her career in district working at the Board of Education Office as administrative assistant to the superintendent. From there, Lisa Renee devoted three years working at both LMS and UMS in various 5th and 6th and 7th grade math and science classrooms before landing her current position as a 6th-grade science teacher. Serving several years in the role of lead replacement teacher takes strength and persistence and true grit as rosters, curricula, expectation, and administrators continually change. But Lisa Renee's tenacity held out. When she became a full-time 6th-grade science teacher, it was a very good day for LMS. Lisa Renee's fifth transformation was underway as full-time teacher. For 10 years, Lisa Renee artfully adorned the hat of educator and nurturer at one and the same time. Lisa Renee's ability to apply two-sidedness as teacher and parent ensured that every one of her students were well taken care of. It would knock me out when working at dances or field days with Lisa Renee. She was always there, wherever there was a student in need of anything. You knew. So you could see it happen before it did. She could help a student find a friend or find a bandy. And Lisa Renee didn't stop there. Not only was she present to serve her students in any way and every time of need, but when working with her students, she was always current and connected to their families. In school, as a teacher, Lisa Renee worked for years as a PTO teacher liaison. Behind every one of her students, Lisa Renee sees a family, and she knows that the students she educates and nurtures are part of a bigger unit, and she works tirelessly to connect our school to our community. When talking with Lisa Renee's students, they're quick to refer to her many-sided talents, and they say she is intelligent and strategic, helpful and supportive, nice and energetic, and funny, too. Lisa Renee is an awesome teacher who helps all of her students unleash the powers they have inside them so they can make a big impact on the people around them. And as Lisa Renee glides into her sixth transformation, that of retiree, she will be sorely missed by all of us at LMS. And while we may not see her newfound work as she spends more time at the beach or travels the world, we will be certain in the knowledge that wherever our Lisa Renee is, she will work as she did at our school in helping others. Lisa Renee will always work with the people around her, her family, her friends, and community members, so that as individuals, they can work to their greatest potentials to work better together, to make a difference in their own community and on the world at large, because that's what you did for us. Lisa Renee, we love you, and we thank you for your service to our school, in our community, and we wish you the very best for your future.
Ms. Susan Lacy, Principal, Village Elementary School. Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to all of our retirees. I had the distinct pleasure of recognizing two members of our paraprofessional team at Village School. They support our special education students at Village, and I have had the pleasure of knowing both of them for years, so we'll start with Arlene Meroldi.
I'm going to share thoughts of my own, as well as thoughts from colleagues, friends, and students. Arlene is celebrating 18 incredible years of dedicated service as a paraprofessional for the students at Montgomery. It is hard to believe that your retirement is upon us. Arlene is an impressive and thoughtful member of the VES family, devoted mom of Montgomery graduates, a supportive colleague and friend. Arlene is an amazing paraprofessional. She does an incredible job supporting teachers and students and always adapts to their needs. She genuinely cares about the young people in her care and works to achieve the best possible outcomes for them. Her students have shared. She helps with all of my subjects and makes sure I am caught up with reading and my homework. She helps me when I have a challenge. She is a kind person, and I hope she does well and that she has a happy retirement. As a veteran and expert, she is also a respected role model and leader. Her colleagues have learned so much from her over the years and have greatly appreciated her professional guidance. She is a flexible team player who is always willing to lend a hand. We commend her for her professional and positive spirit in response to any change or challenge in the classroom. She is steadfast. Honestly, nothing ever rattles her. She has a bring-it-on presence about her. The VES family truly appreciates her kindness. The VES family truly appreciates her kindness and friendship. Her friends have said that conversations with her leave everyone smiling because she always puts things in perspective and truly lifts their spirits. She helps them laugh when they need it most. Your Village School family will truly miss you, and we can't imagine a year without you. Thank you for touching the lives of so many children. Thank you for being on our team and for all that you've brought to our family. May your retirement with your husband, your family, and traveling to your favorite places be the most glorious days of your life. Congratulations, we know you will enjoy it to the fullest. Maria is a valued professional at Village School. It's been 21 years, and she has been loved and respected by many, including me. She is one of those people who you want on your team. Maria, thank you for being on ours and for all you bring to our VES family. I am going to truly miss you. Maria has spent her career advocating and meeting the needs of students, sometimes in small groups and other times one-on-one. She will use every minute of her schedule to serve and make a difference for a child. Her instincts are spot on. There's such a wickedness about her as she gets to know the whole learner, and whenever she's absent, their days are just not the same. They demonstrate through their words and actions how much they miss her. Maria always maintains a positive attitude. She is committed to her work and the success and growth of every student she supports. She is their advocate and guides them through problem-solving, responsible decision-making, and kind interactions with peers, and we sometimes have worked on that together. She does this with sensitivity and poise. Maria's patience and understanding foster a safe and supportive learning environment, and work with her is an absolute pleasure for all the teachers and fellow parents that she works with. Her dedication and untiring commitment to her students is inspiring to everyone who knows her. A colleague who is in the room said, goodness, I tear up writing these words because I will truly miss her. She has been a wonderful friend and colleague to me. She is the ideal model of what a paraprofessional should be. She inspires me, and I offer some guidance in ways I can improve. She has just been amazing grace in how she does her job. She works so incredibly with all our students with a balance of warmth and firmness. She always exudes a quiet strength and composure, and she truly loves the students and wants the best for them. One thing that Maria and I share that's very special is our mothers share a birthday, and we never miss a day in September to honor each other's mothers. And after my mother passed, we still have that special connection on September 15th when we talk about them. Maria has three sons, all raised in Montgomery, four grandkids, and she's looking forward to spending time with her husband and her family, her grandkids, traveling and doing whatever she pleases. You are loved, respected, and will deeply be missed. Congratulations and all the best for a healthy, relaxing, and joy-filled retirement.
And last but not least, Mr. Dan Van Heis, Principal of Orchard Hill Elementary School. This wonderful school board.
Good evening, everybody. You may be questioning my wardrobe choice for this evening. Let me talk to you a little about destiny before I call Mr. Rosenberg up here. I happen to have firsthand knowledge that my man Pete Rosenberg over there is a fan of tie dye. I also know that on Orchard Hill's ABC Countdown, so the last 26 days of the school year, there's a different theme as we go through the alphabet. On the ABC Countdown, today was tea day for tie dye day, so the destiny was there for me to represent both Orchard Hill and Mr. Rosenberg by wearing some tie dye. So today was for you, Pete. Today was for you. All right, let's follow the theme. Come on up here, sir. Come on up here, come on. I am honored. I'm honored to speak for a couple of minutes about an OHES legend, Mr. Pete Rosenberg. Pete has taught second grade at Orchard Hill for 21 years, but his journey in education began even 10 years before that. As his flexible teaching style would prove, Pete has taught. Here we go. In a resource room setting to students' grades K through eight, English to high school students in Jersey City, LA to middle school students in Maplewood, communications arts to middle school students in Springfield, and that was all before settling here in Montgomery Township to teach second grade, where he also served as the district's wellness coordinator for three years towards the end of his tenure. You might be thinking, with all of that middle school and high school experience, why second grade? Well, at least part of the reason had to be his experience in working with young students at summer camps, specifically at Camp Harmony in Warren, New Jersey, for almost 15 years. Enough history, but remember his history as I get to the important stuff. You ever run into someone and just get the feeling that they could effectively teach whatever or whoever was in front of them? That's how I felt when I first got to see Pete in front of students. For me, Pete's superpower is his ability to let his students drive their own learning. Pete's not up in front of the room to put on a show or to even deliver instruction. He's up there to keep the train moving down the tracks, to ask a perfectly timed question, to facilitate learning. Mr. Rosenberg's classroom is one of inquiry, discussion, resilience, and therefore lots of student-led aha moments. As teachers, we all strive for giving our students those aha moments, but what's hard is having the confidence in them to step aside and see if they can get there on their own, or maybe even more importantly, with each other, and that is something that Pete is an expert at. Pete, I know you've already had a little taste of retirement since yours began earlier this school year. I know you must be enjoying spending extra time with those daughters of yours, getting to see family in Florida and North Carolina, and even from what I hear, substitute teaching a little bit. Way to give back, Pete, way to give back. We thank you for your dedication to the families of the Montgomery community over the past 21 years, for your commitment to your students, and for always bringing at least a little dose of mystery and excitement to your instruction year in and year out. Congratulations on your retirement, and we wish you all the best, Pete. Congrats. I didn't think about the tie dyes with the picture, but. Congrats.
We are now going to take a break and enjoy our retirees and speak with them as we enjoy the refreshments.
All right, thank you, everyone. Again, congratulations to all the retirees. On behalf of the board, we wish you all the best. We'll now move to the MTSD Student Representative Report. Ms. Robb.
This June has been a bright month for the students of Montgomery High School. June marks Caribbean American Heritage Month, which is recognized annually to celebrate the history, joy, and perseverance of individuals who identify as Caribbean American and their contributions to our society. June is also LGBTQIA+ Month. MHS students are recognizing and celebrating the contributions of LGBTQIA+ individuals across America and standing in solidarity with LGBTQIA+ with the LGBTQIA+ community in the ongoing struggle against discrimination and injustice. Our students started off this June with SAT testing, followed by senior scholarship planning, honoring some of our amazing students and their outstanding achievements. The Montgomery Interact Club hosted their Man of the Year competition earlier this month, with all funds being donated to charity. Last Thursday, the PTSA showed our students some love with the PTSA Ice Cream Social during noon at lunch. Students enjoyed a variety of ice cream flavors and toppings, which was a welcome treat on hot day. Later that day, the Class of 2024 had their Senior Sunset at Cougar Stadium. Senior Sunset is a part of a more recently popular tradition where a senior class gets together once in the beginning of the year to watch the sunrise, starting the year off together and once at the end of the year to mark the end of their time together. The Class of 2024 is so grateful to all of the wonderful parents and volunteers who helped make last Friday's senior luncheon the amazing success that it was. This week starts finals in Finals Review Week at MHS. This Monday was an M-Day with finals review for A-Day classes and A-Day finals following Friday is a review day for B-Day classes with B-Day finals following next week. On a more musical note, the MHS Choir had a beautiful concert last night in the unpack, and the MHS Band Orchestra had their upcoming Pops concert, June 13th at 7:00 outside MHS by the Silver Manals. Looking ahead for MHS students, Wednesday, June 19th is a half-day and an afterday, and also a graduation for the Class of 2024. On a more personal note, reflecting on what I've learned most from my time at MHS, I've learned the value of community. Community is a word that often gets thrown around as a buzzword or used far too often, but it's the first word that comes to mind when I think of MHS. My education has been supported at every level, with teachers, staff members, administrators, and community members encouraging me to do that. Teachers like Mr. Stuart Crowley and Mr. Stern embody what it means to care about your students and recognize their humanity. Coaches Ingraffia and Figaro's character and leadership inspire every student they encounter. And the leadership of our school's administration can teach us all what it means to collaborate and listen. And Mrs. Pino's diligence in maintaining her students' safety is unparalleled. My education has been a collaboration of hard-working individuals who share a common value of purpose. They care. MHS is a community that I have been so glad to be part of, and I'd also like to thank the Board of Education, not only for working so hard and so diligently to uphold and reflect the values of our community, but for being great examples of integrity and leadership. And I've learned so much in this past year from watching the board, and I'm so inspired every day and every time I get to sit up here as an honorary member. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Robb. And on behalf of the board, we'd like to thank you for your dedication and services to that school year. We know your future is very bright, and we wish you all the best on your next journey of life. All right, we move now to committee representative reports, starting with MTA report.
Good evening, everyone. Mike Rosoli, MTA Special Education Chair. Let me start by saying thank you and congratulations to all the retirees tonight. Their impact is just immense on all the students and colleagues and just Montgomery in general. So, we wish them the best as they go forward with their retirement and hope that they get to find some time to have some fun and relax. With that being said, we have the end of the school year happening now. We have fun days going on, celebrations, and graduations of graduation to all the graduates. Even with that, at the end of the year, the MTA is still focused on supporting students during the summer. For the 50th year in a row, here in Monty takes pride in summer reading. The goal is to provide nominated students with books to read over the summer to prevent summer slide, to encourage reading over the summer, and for students to be able to access books. Teachers have been asked to nominate any students who they think would benefit from a special MTA book deliveries. Then our MTA staff members will deliver the books over the summer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rosoli. Do we have any board member or delegate representative reports tonight?
Yes, I do. So, the Somerset County Educational Services Commission met on June 5th. This meeting was an annual organization meeting for the commission. Barry Walker from Frontwater BOV was re-elected as the board president. The Somerset County Educational Services Commission continues to grow. 62 new students were enrolled this year. This increased enrollment created an immediate need for expansion of the school to provide adequate classroom space. The superintendent is evaluating available locations where the administrators could move to free up space for three additional classrooms needed next year. During the summer, the school will offer the Extended School Year program with curriculum-based instruction, educational and recreational field trips, as well as practical hands-on work experiences. The superintendent shared his vision for growth of the transportation department. The revenue generated by the transportation services is expected to reach about $29 million this year. The district manages 300 over 300 bus routes. The superintendent projects a steady growth of the transportation services, and in the next five years, he projected the revenue to reach $70 million. The district had a novel idea how to create a new experience for the students last month. On the Bring Your Child to Work Day, students from the school had an opportunity to step into roles of the school administrators and act as the administrators of the school. The superintendent shared a slide presentation showing students engaging in working in the payroll department, working in the HR and business administrator office. They learned how to reconcile bank accounts, create budgets, conduct a job interview. They also had an experience of being a superintendent. It was heartwarming to see the smiles and the engagement of the students when they worked tasks with such important goals. The next commission meeting is scheduled for August 3rd.
Thank you, Ms. Fielak. Any other board member or delegate representative reports tonight? Are there any, being that we have this meeting early in the month, any board committee reports available tonight?
Board committee?
Yes.
Policy committee? I thought ACI, I'm going to report to you now.
ACI is due on Friday. Can you talk into the mic? Sorry.
You can't hear me.
I can't hear you.
For the benefit of the public out there.
Okay, so a lot on the policy. Over the last few meetings, we had some questions in regards to changes in policies, but let me begin that we reviewed on June 6th through the policy committee, and we put forth a reading for quite a few policies. Policy 1110, which is District Organizational Chart, that has been adjusted. The revised chart reflects the reporting responsibility of the new Director of Special Services. This position reports to the superintendent, which will be beneficial as the new director will start her position in the district on July 1st, and Mrs. McLaughlin's special ed background will help her acclimate to this position. So, that's a big change, and we're looking forward to having the new director do some great work in our district. As far as other policies are concerned, there have been some minor revisions to Policy 3211, which is Code of Ethics, sportsmanship, equitable education opportunity, and equity in education programs. A lot of them are reflecting some of the changes that have been made in the definitions. So, I would say kind of housekeeping updates. However, there has been a Policy 1140 that has been further edited based the pause that we had in our last meeting. And there was some changes to it because I wanted to make sure that the word equity is clearly defined. As you see here, we have quite a few policies that are being impacted by the changes. We have equitable education and other equity in education programs and services. So, in order to keep the definition consistent in the Policy 1140, we've edited it to actually incorporate the definition of equity, and that policy will be placed today for our first reading. So, that's it. So that's it. I don't know, on the communication, I think some of our board members were not present. I'm sorry, it's an inside joke. So on the communication side, the communication survey was officially closed as of midnight of July sixth. The district met the quota of participants who responded to the parent survey. Community members and staff responded on a slightly lower level, but it will take approximately two to three weeks to receive the results from the National School Public Relations Association, which is who we utilized for the survey. So over the next few weeks, we'll be doing some work there. So hopefully we'll get results in the next meeting. The last piece I wanted to highlight is we have made changes in the food services over the last year, and there's been, in the past, we've had food services for an extended period of time in the school district. We want to continue maintaining fresh view of what that food services company does for school district, to make sure that our kids have the best experience. So what we're going to reestablish this year is the Food Service Committee. I know a lot of parents participated, as well as some of us here in the school board, so we're going to, I think Jack is in the process of working through, but we will reestablish that and reevaluate as the contract will be expiring, to make sure that we want to continue with this company versus potentially give someone else an opportunity. So that's getting revamped, and that is all for my update. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fielak. Could you already get any questions for board members?
May I just ask, I don't know if it goes to the Communications Committee, but would we be able to hear some updates from the Community, sorry, Communications Director in terms of the work that he's been involved in and how it's starting from the communication channels through the district?
Could we maybe invite Ryan to this meeting?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dallin. Any other questions regarding board committee reports? Hearing none, the board recognizes the illicit correspondence. Action Agenda Items Public Comments. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are allotted one opportunity to address the board regarding action, agenda items only for up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. Before you make your comment, state your full name and address and enter both on the Chromebook provider. Be mindful of privacy rights regarding students, board employees, and board members, and to avoid any liability on the part of the speaker. The board discourages defamatory and discourteous remarks. The public comment portions of the meeting are not structured as question and answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities for the public to share their thoughts with the board. The board may refer, may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if the issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command, usually starting at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of this session. Public comments are now open for action, agenda items only. Any comments on action, agenda items? Going once, going twice. Public comments on action, agenda items is now closed. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept Agenda Items one point zero through four point five.
So move to second.
It's been properly moved to second to accept action items one point zero through four point five. Any comments, questions on the motion?
Yes. Actually, I'd like to discuss three point two. Approval of transfers. I'm looking through there, and on page five of that list, I see sixteen thousand dollars going to Hytos. And I know we had talked about them last September. It was something that came up here in Board of Board on it. And I believe at the time I understood that we had paid thirty-five thousand dollars to them, and that account or that contract would be done. And then I see another sixteen thousand dollars under it. I think we were going to talk about them a little bit. It was going to come up somewhere. When will that?
It's still the same contract. They got paid half mid-year and half now at the end of the year. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's at the end of it. So when is that contract?
It's done June third. This is the last payment.
It's not June thirtieth.
Any other questions on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please. Mr. Trent.
Yes, Mr. Carlson.
So on three point two, I'm going to say everything else, yes?
Understood. Ms. Dallin?
Yes.
Ms. Fielak?
Yes.
Ms. Franco-Herman?
Yes, to everything except one point two, and then yes on the one point two with the five thousand series.
Understood. Ms. Harris?
Up C.
Ms. Fielak, adjourned again?
Yes.
Ms. Nargen?
Yes.
Ms. Tina?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes.
Thank you. All motions carried.
Thank you, Mr. Trent. Now move to new business from the public. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are allotted one opportunity to bring any new business to the board for up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. Before you make your comment, please state your full name and address and enter both on the Chromebook provider. Be mindful of privacy rights regarding students, board employees, and board members, and to avoid any potential liability on the part of the speaker. The board discourages defamatory and discourteous remarks. The public comment portions of the meeting are not structured as question and answer sessions. The board may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if the issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command, usually starting at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of this session. New business, comments from the public are now open.
Good evening. Can you hear me up there? Once again, given the restrictions placed upon them via the School Ethics Commission as a result of their actions during the campaign last year, the proper thing for board members Franco-Herman and Harris to do would be to resign and afford the community an opportunity to have fully participating board members who do not have an ethics opinion hang over them. We saw at the May Board meeting that the community has a large pool of accomplished candidates willing to move into these roles. Please also provide any requests that any member of this board has made to the School Ethics Commission requesting the release or timing of this very important information to the voting Montgomery Township community, or any request to speak to the voters of Montgomery about it. This would validate your commitment to being transparent to the community. It would also be helpful for the community to know when board members Franco-Herman and Harris knew their running mate had been dismissed from her job at Clean Food School District and that she did not hold a doctorate degree. Did they know this information before or during their campaign? Based on the leak of personal communication between Mr. Fogarty and a community member and the way Barbara Preston conducted herself, can you please cease all board communication with her? Evidently, she was working with someone on the board attempting to expose a board candidate in an effort to interfere with the board election. I firmly suggest that you reach out to the Montgomery News publisher if you have not done so already. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public, new business? Any other comments from the public or business? Public portion of the comments is now closed. Are there any items from the board members for discussion? Hearing none, at this time I'm entertaining a motion to adjourn. It's been properly moved to second. Any questions on the motion? All those who favor speed five?
Aye.
Motion carried. Have a good evening, everyone.